Clean water!
And we want it!
Now!
One that's before everybody's radar is climate change. But few people are invested in the effort to actually investigate what the research is on climate change. Item number six on your agenda, council members, are special presentations. We have with us this evening a presentation on Hartford County Climate Action. I'd like to invite up Ms. Waite and those she would like to bring forward with her. The floor is yours. And the microphones, if you pull them a little closer, will work better for our council and for the people watching from home. So pull them as close as you're comfortable.
Good evening, Council President Slutsky and Councilmen. Thank you so much for inviting us to be here. My name is Tracy Waite. I'm president of Hartford County Climate Action and a resident of Bel Air. We are here tonight at President Slutsky's invitation to talk about the science of climate change. I will explain three central ideas to understanding climate science. Number one, the importance and natural role of greenhouse gases in creating the Earth's livable planet. Two, the relationship between greenhouse gases and global warming. And most importantly, three, how we know that human activity is upsetting the natural balance of greenhouse gases. Von Palmer, a resident of Abingdon and a biologist and environmental educator, who has worked for the Anita Light Estuary Center and the Maritime Museum, will share about one of the numerous impacts, one of many, on Hartford County by climate change. And to her left is Dr. Lakshmi Tadapalli, a resident of Abingdon and a microbiologist who has done research on cancer and neuroscience. And she will speak about why, given that the science is so clear, we are not taking action with urgency. To close, I will share why a move to clean renewable energy is something we can agree on. And please hold questions until the end.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waite.
So, to start our slideshow, the very first slide shows a satellite. This is the Jason III, and it's one of NASA's fleet of satellites that provide data for understanding climate science, climate change. It gives data on sea level rise. The quality of data and the power of computers that we have now just gets better with every passing year. So, what is climate change? Climate change refers to a cascade of changes that starts with global warming. For example, a warmer atmosphere holds more water vapor, for example. So one part of climate change is that we get heavier downpours. And so, the graphs that you see, compare temperatures during the last three decades, compare those temperatures with the temperatures that we saw from 1951 to 1980. You can see how the distribution of temperatures keeps shifting to the right, towards the warmer temperatures. Climate skeptics like to point to days like we had today, cooler than average, and say, "Where is that global warming now?" But as you can see, if you look to the far right, closest to where we are now, the blue on the left, shows that we still do have temperatures that are below average, just fewer of them. Climate change effects are happening now. Scientists predicted in the late 1900s that climate change would lead to sea level rise, more frequent and higher storm surges, and that low-lying cities like Manhattan were at risk. Skeptics called them alarmist. But on the right, you see the 9/11 memorial construction site in Manhattan in 2012 during Superstorm Sandy. And on the left, you can see that, this is New Delhi in 2015, the streets actually melted. This slide is our county along the shoreline, low-lying areas, the coastal plain in particular. Of course, are vulnerable to storm surge flooding, to sea level rise, and to super-tide inundations. So these are, this is a risk level map. It was made with the Maryland Coastal Atlas ArcGIS. And it's supposed to be simple. It's supposed to be something you can look at. And it shows high-resolution topographic data, LiDAR, you might have heard of that. And of course, it shows with the colors, you can see the red is the first to flood, and then it goes to lighter colors as you go higher on ground. There's another part of this that's identified with color coding for pollution sites, brown fields, and things that would be flooded or affected by the fact that you could, you know, you would have certain levels of inundation. Right now, Maryland is experiencing twice the rate of the global mean sea level rise. And that is due to two things: land subsidence and also the fact that there's the slowing of the Gulf Stream. In the last 111 years, to look back, the tidal gauges have shown that our shoreline has experienced 14 inches of sea level rise in 111 years. However, based upon the latest National Climate Assessment of 2014, using satellite altimetry data, it's very, very accurate, the intermediate-high sea level rise scenario projects that there will be 4.2 feet of sea level rise locally by 2100. That's an intermediate-high. And that's what I want to share with you, is that that map should make you a little nervous.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, so, onto the science. In order to understand climate change, we have to begin by understanding greenhouse gases. The moon has no greenhouse gases, in fact, no atmosphere. And so, when the sun's rays strike the surface of the moon, it rises to a temperature of 260 degrees on average during the day. And then at night, when there's no sun shining, temperatures drop off to minus 280 degrees Savante Arginius, back in the late 1800s, discovered that the mean temperature of the ground is influenced by the presence of heat-absorbing gases in the atmosphere. This is called the greenhouse effect. So that's something we knew about back in the late 1800s. This picture shows how a lot of the sun's radiation is bounced back into space and never reaches the Earth. It comes in, and, I wish I had a pointer, my pointers don't work on these screens, but the yellow shows the sun's radiation coming in and a lot of it bouncing back off. And because we don't get all of that radiation, that's why our temperatures don't go up as high as they do on the moon. The rays that make it through, warm the Earth, which then emits infrared radiation. The greenhouse gases, carbon dioxide, nitrous oxide, methane, and more, trap this warmth like a cozy blanket. And so, the Earth does not get as cold at night as the moon does. So, the more greenhouse gases that are in the atmosphere, the more heat that's trapped. Over the history of the Earth, the total amount of greenhouse gases has risen and fallen slightly. It goes slowly up a little bit, slowly down a little bit. What effect do you think that those kind of natural changes would have? You know, if the greenhouse gases are a blanket, it's kind of like, at times, we have a thicker blanket and at times, a thinner blanket, so temperatures going up and down. So, in the 1970s, technologies were developed for commercial purposes to drill deep into the ocean floor. The same techniques were used to drill into ice. Analysis of the seabed clay and of the ice cores showed the same thing, that the level of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere plays a central role in climate change. Ice cores provided data on temperature and carbon dioxide going back 400,000 years. In fact, there was one sample that was 800,000 years long. Over on the right, you can see the dark and light bands, that's a winter and a summer, and then another winter and another summer, and they can analyze the carbon dioxide that's in bubbles in the ice. During glacial periods, the level of carbon dioxide is lower than during interglacial periods by as much as 50%. So really, what we're trying to talk about here is how there are natural variations, very slowly, happening in the amount of greenhouse gas trapping, greenhouse gases that we have in the atmosphere, heat-trapping gases. And that that has been occurring naturally over the millennia. And this graph that you see on the left shows temperatures, which is, the temperatures is in blue, carbon dioxide level is in blue on that graph, if you can see it, and temperature is in red. And you can see how closely they track each other. This particular graph on the left goes back 400,000 years. Temperatures rose and fell naturally, and carbon dioxide rose and fell from a low of 180 parts per million to a high of about 290 parts per million. Now, on the right-hand side, the second graph, you can see how high carbon dioxide levels are today. Now, that, we are up at about, we are up at 409 parts per million right now. We are way above where we've been for, you can see on this graph, 400,000 years. And in fact, it's actually much longer than that. And it is not a coincidence that this unusual increase coincides with the point in history, in human history, when coal burning began to replace burning biomass like logs, dung, and whale blubber. In this picture, you see that there is a natural exchange of carbon between plants, animals, the Earth, and the water. And this is called the carbon cycle. And so, the four arrows on the right-hand side, you know, that's the natural carbon cycle that has always happened. The land is giving off carbon dioxide, and then plants breathe carbon dioxide in and give off oxygen. The same thing happens in the water, carbon dioxide dissolves into the ocean, and then it also percolates back out again and goes back out. So, on the left, you see the energy plant, burning fossil fuel for energy. And land use is another thing that affects carbon dioxide levels in the atmosphere from human activity. So, although 29 gigatons, and that's how much is released through those human activities, although that is small compared to the 750 gigatons that move through the carbon cycle every year, it adds up. Because 60% of that extra that's put out doesn't get, it's too much, it doesn't get absorbed back into the Earth. And what happens is it just builds up year after year, that extra, that little bit of extra, just builds up year after year. And as a result, you know, as I said before, the carbon dioxide levels are higher than they had been in the last slide for 400,000 years. Actually, they are at the highest that they have been in 15 to 20 million years. Now, a natural, usually, the changes that happened during Ice Ages was a change of about 100 parts per million. And it normally takes 5,000 to 20,000 years for that much change to take place naturally. But the recent increase of 100 parts per million, from 290 up to, it's actually more than 100, because we're at 409, has occurred in the last 120 years. So, I'm gonna bore you now with one more sciency, really sciency idea. This is a little hard for me to talk about. I'm not a chemist myself, and I've read a lot about this so that I can understand it. And thank goodness for the people in our group who can help to explain this to me, but I'll do my best. So, this is really important, because this is how we prove that that extra carbon dioxide in the air is actually coming from fossil fuels. So, the nitrogen in our atmosphere, there's, you know, lots and lots of nitrogen up there. And nitrogen has, in its nucleus, it has seven protons, and carbon has six. So nitrogen on the chemical table is the neighbor to carbon. And when solar radiation hits some nitrogen, it actually bumps a proton out, and that nitrogen becomes carbon 14. So it's actually carbon, but it's radioactive, it's unstable. So, the carbon dioxide that is in our atmosphere, before we ever started burning fossil fuels, and even today, is a mixture of carbon dioxide, some of which is carbon 14 dioxide, and most of it is carbon 12 dioxide. It's a mix. But, the carbon dioxide that's released when you burn fossil fuels, guess what? It has zero carbon 14 in it. And the reason is that the half-life of carbon 14 is 5,730 years. So, fossil fuels are 65 million years old plus. That means that there has been so much time for that carbon 14 to biodegrade, that it's all gone. So, the carbon dioxide that's being added into the atmosphere has no carbon 14, whereas what's in the atmosphere naturally is a mix of carbon 14 and carbon 12. So that ratio, carbon 14 to carbon 12, when you add in all of this zero carbon 14 to it, it dilutes the amount that's in the atmosphere naturally. That only happens, this falling ratio of carbon 14 to carbon 12, it has fallen directly along with the amount of carbon dioxide, the amount of fossil fuels that have been burned, okay? So I hope I explained that well enough. But, this is important, because this is the fingerprint of human activity, and we can measure it. So, in addition, you know, as we talk about human activity, not only are we affecting levels on the right, putting out extra carbon dioxide and extra methane from our activities, and extra nitrous oxide from our farming practices, but also, we have created new greenhouse gases, which are refrigerants, basically. They leak into the atmosphere, and they are highly heat-trapping. Okay, so I'm just gonna skip that and go on to Lakshmi. Yeah, because I don't want to take too much time, so.
So, I mean, we presented the scientific evidence so far.
As close as you can.
Yeah, okay. My voice is really loud to begin with. That's okay. No, 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 this is fine. Can you hear me now? Yeah. So, we presented the scientific evidence so far, and so when the science is so clear, what is stopping us from acting with urgency? Let's take a look at fossil fuel industry and its role in this whole process. So the climate implications were realized by fossil fuel industry as early as 1977, believe it or not. The Union of Concerned Scientists obtained documents from the fossil fuel companies by Freedom of Information Act, and international, an internal report prepared by ExxonMobil, and shared with at least 50 other fuel companies, warned unequivocally that burning these fossil fuels was causing climate change, and that the relevant science is well-established, beyond doubt, cannot be denied. But, business interests outweighed public health and safety. So how did the fossil fuel companies respond to this information? They chose to deceive, misinform, by influence at the expense of public health and safety. They embarked on a series of campaigns to deliberately deceive the public about the reality of climate change, and block any actions that might curb carbon emissions. Internal fossil fuel industry memos revealed decades of disinformation, not just one year, not just two years, decades, by sowing doubt about this science where little or none They not only did this, disinformation and sowing doubt, but they bought credibility through alliances with academia or professional societies. And they harassed scientists who spoke out with results or views inconvenient for the industry. Okay? So as you all know where tobacco industry stands today, but tobacco industry successfully stalled meaningful regulations for decades. Virtually, that's the exact procedure adopted by fossil fuel industry. And so far, they have been able to do the same, at least when it comes to federal legislation. Unfortunately, despite this evidence that the science provides, the deliberate campaign to deceive the public continues even today. Science will stand the test of time, no doubt about that. Okay? But fossil fuel industry and most of our leaders failed us. So, is it too late now? I mean, there is emissions, there is... So, what can be done now? And there are smart ways to fix this problem. Denial is not one of them. Which will result in, if we adopt the smart ways, go greener, you know, it will result in cleaner air, independence from fossil fuel energy, job growth, cost savings in the long run, and above all, better health for everyone. And an excellent example is provided by Harvardian Grace, right here, you know, which adopts and gets 100% of its electricity from cleaner solar energy. So I think it is time for Hartford County to do it as well. I mean, we need to think about the health and future of our future generations, children, grandchildren. And with this, I'll give it to Tracy.
I know that this is being recorded and seen by some citizens in our county. And so, for any citizens who are listening, we ask you to contact Hartford County Climate Action. We are all volunteer organization, but we can provide speakers on this topic. Secondly, we ask citizens to do everything you can to reduce your energy usage. For example, start with a free home energy audit. A list of additional steps that individuals can take to shrink their carbon footprint can be found at our website. And number three, tell your elected officials and candidates in this election year that their position on climate change will affect your vote. And county council members, President, we ask you to, we have just one request, for now at least, to create a work group or a committee to find Hartford County's own path, commit to finding a path to independence from fossil fuels. And we're gonna end with a very short video, one minute.
Here we are in one of the reddest cities, and one of the reddest counties, and one of the reddest states, but we put the silly national politics aside to do what's best for the people we were elected to serve. And the best thing to do was to sign contracts for wind and solar. Currently, we're 90% renewable energy. In the spring, we'll be the largest city in the country that will be 100% renewable energy. And I think we're getting a fresh approach, because the national politics is, Texas wasn't supposed to do this. That's a, that's this liberal progressive idea up in the Northeast, they should be doing that. But, the decision was first and foremost, an economic decision.
Here, everything that we do in this city is built on 30-year horizons. So in my case, when it came to power, that meant taking a 30-year outlook on what the cost of the energy is. The best part about renewable energy is that with a solar panel, or even a wind turbine for the most part, it's not difficult to keep them working, and they have no fuel cost. So 30 years from today, they will be making energy that costs nothing to the market.
All right, so, we're finished. Thank you so much. And if you have any brief question, thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Waite. We very much appreciate you coming. Council members, at this time is your opportunity to ask questions or make comments. Ms. McMahon?
Thank you, Mr. President. This page, can you go to this, this page?
Um, yes. Okay.
On the bottom, this graph at the bottom. How many years does that represent? It didn't have a graph, and I was wondering, that's the carbon core.
On the right there, that is just a little picture of the ice, and that's only about 11 years right there.
Oh.
Because...
I was thinking it was more like 1,000 years.
No. What you see right there is just, the light part and the dark part is one year. That's a winter and a summer. It's almost like looking at the rings of trees.
Okay, all right. I don't know if you are aware, but about six years ago, we passed legislation with regard to wind turbines, trying to get them in the appropriate places. And when we went to the federal government, they have a map that they have created for the entire United States. And unfortunately, in Hartford County, the availability of enough wind to turn a turbine only exists right up around the Pennsylvania line, which is a, which is a five, is the maximum. And that area up there is about a three and a half. So, wind is hardly an alternative for us. But of course, we are, along with a lot of other counties, certainly looking at the solar, because we know that the college, we approved funding for the college to put the solar on top of their buildings. And the hospital also does some work with solar down there, too. So, your presentation was extremely succinct and well-done, my thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hartford County is doing some great things when it comes to solar and geothermal. The county has tax credits for those things, that's proactive. A lot of the high schools have solar panels, some of the middle schools, the senior center, Jarrettsville Library have geothermal, a number of other... Jarrettsville Library have geothermal, a number of other buildings. So there are a lot of good things happening. We're hoping to work, you know, together to accelerate that.
Mr. Schutz?
I just thought of something. You triggered an idea. It's my understanding that some of the state tax credits kind of went away with solar and it's not as advantageous for folks to do that. And it's kind of why a lot of people were, like, it really ramped up the last couple of years, but it's my understanding that it's kind of dropped off. Is that correct? And you guys lobby the state to continue those types of programs that encourage folks to be more green? And I think it also covers geothermal. I didn't hear too much about that, but that's another...
Yeah. We didn't want to really focus too much in this presentation on solutions because that's really a policy. Those are policy issues. And, you know, everybody has to sit down together at the table and work out what's best for each jurisdiction. So we didn't want to really get into that too much, but we certainly have ideas about that. We do work on a state level a little, but since we're a small volunteer group with a lot of support, thanks to everybody out here who showed up tonight. But, you know, we want to work locally as much as we can.
Yeah. I've just heard from folks in the solar industry that, you know, it kind of went really wild and everybody was doing it, and then it kind of struck up. I just was kind of thinking, maybe outside the box a little bit, that it wouldn't maybe be a bad idea to continue to advocate for those credits.
There's one person here. Liz, can you say anything about, do you want to say something about solar? This is one person right here who's an expert on this at state level.
She can go to the microphone in the back if she...
Liz, I hate to put you on the spot there, but I think you know more about solar legislation and policy statewide, state level.
Hi. My name is Liz Lee, and I'm with Chesapeake Climate Action Network and also work with the CCAN Action Fund. And I was a part of the Clean Energy...
Please get her closer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was a part of the Clean Energy Jobs Campaign, where we were looking to pass a Clean Energy Jobs Act. And we did really well in the state. We did have a majority of cosponsors in the Senate and House. However, our bill did not get out of committee, but we're looking forward to pushing it forward. And what this bill does is that it looks to increase renewable portfolio standard in Maryland to 50%. And this bill is to get to a pathway to 100% in Maryland. And one part of the provision that we talked about is increasing the solar carve-out to 14.5%. Because of this issue that you're talking about, there is this solar urgency right now where a lot of solar jobs, they're moving to different places. For example, to DC where the market is better. And right now, because of the solar renewable energy credit issue where the prices have been driven down because of the oversupply of S-Rex, right now, it is putting the industry in a crisis moment right now. And we definitely want to retain solar jobs in Maryland, and we also want to generate more jobs using statewide legislation. So thank you for bringing up the fact that we also need to be pushing on the statewide level as well.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
That reminded me also, just a few years ago, I believe Jim McMahon, Councilman McMahon and myself, we came together on a bill that put more funding out there for our local tax credit, because there was like a backlog of two or three years. So we kind of took care of that. But I'm not sure where we're at now. I just wanted to try to get that out there, too.
Thank you, Mr. Schutz. Mr. Vincenney?
Thank you, Mr. President. When going through your program here, and I came across a slide referencing Havity Grace Savings with their solar energy, I got to thinking, where do they have any solar fields in Havity Grace? And obviously, they don't. But I did some checking today. And I was assured that they've saved nearly a quarter of a million dollars in the last couple of years by going to solar energy. And this past year, they saved $35,000. So congratulations to them. And thank you for making me aware of it.
Yeah. Government buildings. So Hartford County, we, as you know, James Sir said, Hartford County has helped what? Hartford Community College budget for solar? So, but the government buildings within Hartford County, can they get solar, you know, energy instead of regular electricity?
Havity Grace has basically just purchased the energy. The solar fields are not physically in Havity Grace, but they're just sourcing their energy needs from solar. So more demand, more supply. And they're committing to creating demand. That's an important step, too.
I think it's important for the public to understand, and the solar panels are in Pairingman, and they buy their energy from that connection. And that, so that people in Havity Grace aren't confused over the other parts of the county, those are government buildings only. The city of Havity Grace as an entity in Bully Rock are not receiving power from the solar grid through the solar panels. But all the government buildings are, and that's been a saving for the government. And we may be able to use that as a model that others might want to consider in that process. But there might have been people listening, because this goes out instantly and on the Hartford Cable Network in Havity Grace saying, why are our bills going down? So, but it's just to make sure that everybody understands that the government itself is saving money using that process. Mr. Schutz?
We also have Dr. Erin Farrer, who works for the county. And I know that she helps the county save a tremendous amount of money, you know, by being more green with the light bulbs and things that we use in all of our buildings as well. So, you know, she might be a good person to reach out to as well. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schutz. Any other comments from council members, questions? Mr. Beal?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Tracy, since we're on first-name basis now, it's all good. First of all, I just want to thank you for the work that you and your organization do in raising awareness to this very important issue. Good job. But I think, as you're well aware of, there's a lot more that needs to be done. And also, I have your presentation, but I don't have that video. Would it be possible for you to get that to me?
I can email you a downloaded document.
Yeah, appreciate where you got that from. I saw it was from National Geographic.
I believe that you have it as well.
Right. But one other question. Now, when it comes to your organization, because I've been looking at, you know, and studying geothermal and things like that, you know, and I feel one of the ways that most households could lower their energy bills by probably 40% is, first of all, let's get rid of that hot water tank and use geothermal. And do you do any, anything, does your group do anything to raise awareness or show those statistics? Because, you know, I looked at it when I was stationed in Germany back in the 70s. They were using tankless water heaters. And I cannot for the life of me understand why we're not giving out rebates or subsidizing that in all-new home construction and even some existing homes. So do you, does your organization look at anything like that?
We had an energy expo back in, I think, 2006 in Edgewood at the Boys and Girls Club. And we had some solar installers, solar companies, local solar companies and geothermal companies that came as part of that to talk about what they're doing. But these are small businesses. We certainly want to promote those. But, you know, we are really a small group, and so what we're able to do is unfortunately much more limited than we would like.
Well, we'll do what we can to help your group grow. I know I will. I can't speak, but I know. So thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. Woods?
Yep. You gave out your information, but you said you'd be willing to go to the community councils or community meetings if invited. Can you provide that again, the information so our community councils can reach out?
I gave you a handout. I think it's on your desk right there. And it has the contact information on it, telephone number, yes.
Maybe we can get them to post it.
And the website is www.hcclimactaction.org.
Very good. And you're definitely willing to come out to our community advisory board?
We would love to.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. And I'm glad you, I was going to do that. If, in fact, you didn't, was to give your contact with your email so that they can get to you. And one of the advantages and one of the reasons that when I had an opportunity to meet with you and some others after our previous engagement was to make the public aware of your organization, to provide contact information so that they may be able to look into joining if they're interested or have similar interests. And since this goes out automatically over the computer networks on real time, and it will be shown twice more this week on Hartford Cable Network so that the public will have a chance to see this presentation. And if, in fact, they're able, maybe we can increase their membership and those that are interested in joining our organization. So I first want to, secondly, want to thank you for taking the time to come meet with me and to have those conversations. And I think that this was a good thing for the public to be included in. And thank you for your membership, for showing up. I appreciate that.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howdy. My name's Noah Crockett. I'm in the process of changing it. I forgot. I wrote Noah Jones. But I live in Forest Hill. I've made some changes to my speech based on the very appropriate reaction from the council tonight to the experts who appeared to testify on the case of action to climate change. So a few things are off the cuff. I'm Nanookoke in Lumbee. The Nanookoke are indigenous to the northern and eastern Chesapeake Bay areas. My ancestors have been born in, lived in, and died in these lands for at least 45,000 years. Before white settlers came, we called the Chesapeake the Great Bay of Pearls. And alongside the other nations on its waters, it was our sacred duty to tend to the bay and the land. And we did. John Smith called it the Garden of Eden after all. The environment and ecosystem have obviously been taken from my people and with it so have a portion of the responsibilities of its care. You all may not realize that you have a special relationship with me, special and separate from the one you have with most of your other constituents or voters, but you do. You are the current stewards of my ancestral homeland, and I reasonably have expectations for you. And those expectations are mostly in action. And it can be a wide range of things, from some of the things you guys discussed, increasing, you know, subsidies for solar panels and things like that. But it's also just appropriate public support for action and correct scientific information in the discourse for statewide policies like the rain tax, I thought was extremely useful in taking care and being responsible with our ecosystem and our land. The responsible care for the ecosystem in which you live, my ancestral homeland, is not up to political opinion. It's not a debate. I recognize the relative limitations in power and jurisdiction that you council members have. I'm not telling you to end offshore drilling for the entire country or something, but I am telling you to get your act together. I'm telling you to do better. When I was first made aware of this meeting as a forum to address statements made primarily by the council president on the subject of climate change and our collective responsibility to address it, maybe a month ago, when I found out, I sat down, purchased and read a book called Six Degrees: Our Future on a Hotter Planet by Mark Lynas. I got my copy used for only 97 cents. And this morning, my partner checked, and there is a copy available at the Abeneze Public Library, which doesn't cost 97 cents. I'm not touting this book as the end-all-be-all text on the topic of climate change. It's readable, well-sourced. It was easy for me to get a hold of it, and after an easy read, it left me with no real questions on the origin and threat of climate change. The book outlines the causes very objectively, with overwhelming evidence, and then describes the consequences of a few degrees rise in average global temperature in plain language. I want to emphasize there were no barriers for me to get the information. A perfectly suitable understanding of the subject cost only 97 cents plus shipping and a few days of casual reading.
You gonna have about 30 seconds or finish?
All right. I explain this to be clear. You do not have an excuse for failing to meet my expectations. You have a responsibility to the citizens of Hartford County and to the indigenous people like me on whose land you now live. If you disagree with the common sense steps as outlined by the overwhelming majority of experts, you do not have a justification for your seat in government. Either you are willfully neglecting your sacred duty, your responsibility to me and the citizens of Hartford County, and that's it. That's that simple. It's unfortunate but not irreparable. You do have the ability to step up and do better. I have made my expectations clear, and they are not unreasonable or inaccessible. They should not have to, I should not have to argue the merits of the scientific consensus on the origin and threat of climate change. It's 2018 after all, and there is perfectly good resource for that in your local public library and with the experts who spoke tonight. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, sir.
This is what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.